All right, it's 5:31. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's Budget Workshop to order. Our first order of business is attendance, and I see, I think I see all five selectmen are here and present. Tonight, we've got a couple of things going on. We've got the, between now and seven o'clock, town hall agencies are going to have a chance to present their departments to us for, for our consideration as we go through the deliberation process. There are one, two, three, four, five of them to get done in an hour and a half. So we're going to have to stay somewhat vigilant. And then when we convene the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen at seven, we're going to continue budget presentations into that meeting. That will include most of the police-oriented departments. So that will be the Police Department, the Police Commission, Emergency Management, and Communications. So should be a pretty short meeting. I see your look, Charlie. That's, somebody had to say it, and you were muted. So before we get started, I think everybody has had the, the updated budget worksheets that we were talking about the other night that show my revisions and, and linking the, the change from year to year in percentages and that. I know Amy sent that around yesterday or the day before. So that should make it a little bit more apples to apples in terms of looking at the budget. Also in that, we have identified all of the current year expenses associated with the Broadbrook Fire Department. Those will, I'm, I'm going to ask that this board remove those just prior to completing the budget and forwarding on to the Board of Finance. But in that copy that you have been provided with, we're, we now are clearly showing what those current year expenses associated with Broadbrook Fire are so that they can be taken out. If there are no other opening comments from members of the board, I would invite the Town Assessor Helen Tots to give her, her presentation and take any questions from members of the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I really don't have a lot to say. My regular budget as submitted, I don't think there were any changes or any big changes from Jason's recommend, recommendations versus my requests. I guess if there's any questions on the regular budget before I mention my CIP, because I do want to get into that a little bit. I know it's not a CIP meeting, but um, there is something that ties into the budget and the CIP that I'd like to talk about.
So Helen, why don't you lead right into that, and then we'll take questions after you've explained that.
Okay. Wasn't really sure how to do that. Okay. What I would like to do in this office is upgrade our KAMA software. KAMA software is computer-assisted mass appraisal. It's the software that actually generates values for the real estate in town. We currently have an older version of software that is only used in about 11 towns throughout the state. The fact that it is not widely used impacts each town that does use it, and that support isn't as good as it could be. We don't have many people to turn to who are using it in their office when we have an issue. There is what I think of better software available. It's called Vision or DGSI, Vision Government Services. I would really like to bring that into this office. I would like to do it as soon as possible because we have revaluation coming up in 2022. The best time to upgrade software is any time but during a revaluation. So that gives us a narrow, narrow frame of time to actually do an upgrade. I did submit a CIP request for the funds, breaking it into two years. The company is willing to allow us to pay over two fiscal years. The total cost is approximately $43,500. Now that includes upgrades to our server to make it able to use the software. We have been putting aside money every year since the last reveal in 2017 to go towards the 2022 revaluation. So we do have some money available that could go now without having to do a separate CIP request for additional funds. And then we would be able to replace whatever we take out of what's currently sitting in the revaluation funds before we actually do the revale. I, we, we have upgraded and installed new permitting software, new mapping software, and new financial packages. We really need to upgrade the assessor package next, as far as I'm concerned. I have an open position in this office for an Assistant Assessor. It's been open since September. Having a software package in place that potential candidates would feel comfortable using because they've used it in other towns is a big plus compared to trying to entice someone to come into an assessor's office and have to completely relearn new software to do the job. That's just one other plus of upgrading the software. What we have now is cumbersome. It's slow. I've worked with it for two years now. I've done training on it. It's still cumbersome and slow. So that's, that's where I stand. That's my big pitch tonight. Not so much my regular budget. There's really no changes in there. But I would really like to see an approval, possibly a waiver of the bidding process, and be able to upgrade the software and get on track before we're ready to start a revaluation next year.
So I've got a couple of questions for Helen, and then I'll open to members of either the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance. Helen, you may have said this, and I may have missed it. How many towns use Vision?
There is just over 100 towns in Connecticut that use Vision.
And?
And there's equality. There's a lot of them.
Oh, right. Equality is the one that we're on.
The one that, yeah.
So by going from a platform that's used in 11 communities to one that's used in 100, that should make future recruitments in that office easier.
Definitely.
And is it fair to assume that conversion to the new software that you're recommending would in some way be able to save the town either time or money in terms of performing the revale?
Definitely time, very possibly money depending on who was awarded the contract to actually do the revaluation. Vision has a long history. I have worked with Vision almost my whole career, which is why I'm very comfortable in endorsing and asking for it. And, and they would definitely be bidding on the revaluation. Just about every revaluation company that's licensed in the state will also work with and are familiar with the Vision platform. So even if they weren't going to be our revale company to do the revale, the other companies all are familiar with and can use their software.
And the last question I have before I open it up to others. Have you consulted with Joe and Len in IT to make sure that all of the costs associated with conversion are incorporated into that $43,500 number you shared?
Yes. Um, the, the, the actual cost is approximately $40,000 for Vision itself. The additional $3,500 is the upgrade to our server. And they interface with our GIS mapping company and they, and they interface with our other side of the assessment process. Yeah, our administrative side in many, many towns. So as far as Len and Joe were concerned, it was just a server issue and that's included in this 43.5. And Vision has, yeah, Vision has agreed that they would be willing to spread the payment over two fiscal year period if we're more comfortable doing that.
Okay, thank you. Any members of the Board of Selectmen or Board of Finance have any questions for the assessor? Alan?
You had mentioned, you know, using the revale money, which I think the revale money is to pay the revale company, right?
Yep.
Right. This would be in order to improve the software that will be used for the revaluation. Any company that comes in due to revaluation will be using whatever software we have in place already.
So if it wasn't approved at CIP, then we would be short that money if we were to go that route?
One of the things that Helen and I and Amy have talked about is that the cost of performing a revaluation is, we're starting to see that actually come down over time. So Helen is of the, at least, I don't mean to speak for her while she's on, but she's actually explained that we probably have that expense covered already in, in CNR. And this is a revale-related expense.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that if we were, you know, if that was not to make it out of the CIP budget, then, you know, we're not counting money that we don't have.
No, we pretty much have the money put aside. And when the time comes to start paying the revale, we would only, and, and again, we don't know how much that would be anyways. We would be very, very close to covering it already.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments for Helen? Noreen?
The Vision system has no problem with our current GIS system. It won't be any problems. Okay.
Yep, they interface with it in quite a few towns around the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Amy, did you have anything?
I was just going to share that this is another case where we did some UCOA reclassing. Professional services looks like it's going down, but it's really not. It's just been spread to other accounts. So this is one of those cases where we have reallocated funds, but overall, the money is pretty much the same.
Thank you for pointing that out. It looks like it went into audit services and printing and binding. Other questions or comments for Helen? Helen, thank you very much. Short and plain.
Yes. You can mute me now.
Okay. Next up will be the Building Department, our Town Building Official, Rand Stanley. Rand's is not in Tab 2 under the UCOA change. His department is actually under Public Safety. So he's in Tab 3, about two-thirds of the way through that tab.
Are we going to go, is she going to go over the Board of Assessment Appeals?
Oh, she can.
I mean, not that there's really anything there. I think it's just a recording secretary, but just for the record.
Trying to unmute her.
Myself. There we go. Am I am you?
You're unmuted. We can hear you. No, we could have heard you.
Oh, okay. I'm unmuted. Okay. Um, yeah, the Board of Assessment Appeals is pretty much static. We have the funds for Recording Secretary. The chairman is good with the budget as it stands, has his stamp of approval.
And Helen's staff has actually stepped up in the last, I'd say, last year to provide additional assistance to that board that they had previously done outside, which is saved some money and also helped things move slowly there.
Thank you, Jerry.
That moves slowly.
What was that?
You said move slowly. You said to move, it was helping things move slowly.
I meant smoothly. Smoothly, yes. Any questions on Assessment Appeals?
Nope.
Okay, mute me.
I'm going to mute you again, Helen. Bye-bye. Next up will be Rand Stanley. Mr. Stanley, the floor is yours. You're not muted, but we can't hear you. Nope. Yeah, please. Hang on one second. We're sending technical assistance. Technical assistance has arrived. Rand's just going to dial in and then he'll be with us. Thank you. Good evening, Rand.
Have you admitted me?
Yeah, there's a lot. Mute your computer.
If I mute my computer, you won't hear me. I won't hear you.
You'll hear us through the phone.
Okay. I can hear you here.
Yeah, so we're good.
Okay, so every, everyone can hear me?
Yeah.
All right, well, Jay, as you and I requested, as you and I talked about the day we went over this, just so that the board knows what's going on, I did request a full-time permit clerk. I was looking for a grade three classification, and the base on that is $48,539 when you add in the benefits package that takes it up about another 14, 14.5. As it stands right now, that part-time salary is 17 for that part-time position, 17 and a little change. So it, it would be an additional cost to the community of about 50. As, as we discussed, you didn't put that forward in your recommendation. And as we discussed, if that's, if that's what it is, that's what it is. I was also looking for a part-time electrical inspector based on what I foresee as the upcoming workload. And as you and I discussed with the recommendations you put forth, you added an additional $10,000 to the professional line item. So it's, I, I won't say it's a wash, but I, I will say that it, it provides at the going rate for a contracted electrical inspector, if I can find one to come in contracted, it's going to afford us a little over 22 weeks at really three days a week or two and a half days a week of inspection. So I, I actually put forward, forward a budget, budget of 245,890. You've submitted a recommendation, I believe, of 193,248. And we just, we'll go with what we got to go with and make it work.
So before we take questions from the Selectmen and the Board of Finance, I would just share that one of the other pieces of Rand's budget that is significant is the revenue side of things. Amy and I will be talking with the departments that are revenue generating and, and provide revenue estimates based on what was recommended by Governor Lamott and what our department heads are suggesting. We'll have that for the Board of Selectmen probably before Wednesday of next week. So you should keep an eye out for that. That's going to be another piece of, of Rand's operations. But if, Rand, if you wanted to talk kind of abstractly about how you're, you're, you come to those numbers without necessarily locking yourself in on one, feel free to explain the process you use.
Well, we're taking a look at, right now, somewhere around a 25, 22 to 25% increase in permit applications. We have exceeded the revenue projection for this fiscal year at this point in time, which means primarily that we've got March, April, May, and June, or one-third of the entire year left that will end up being, I, I won't say excess revenue. There's no such thing in a municipal budget, but it will be, it'll be revenue that exceeds the projected revenue for this fiscal year. We've got some huge projects coming up, and I've got a project in the rearview mirror that has lagged significantly, and at this point in time sits in limbo. So if you take a look at this year's budget, we have not spent one dime as yet out of our professional line items, professional line, professional services line item. That's $20,000 line item. And that was specifically put in place to allow for the part-time inspectors that we needed to handle 121-unit, 55 and older adult complex that was being built in town. In the meantime, we saw things progress with a large box warehouse development down on Route 5. We've had another business that has done remarkably well, and we have a new structure that I expect to CEO provide a certificate of occupancy to within the next six to eight weeks down on Route 5. I know we have other businesses that are looking to expand or take structures down, rebuild on Route 5, along with, at this point in time, two significant solar fields that will provide a great deal of permitting revenue. That's for this, and I, I can't tell you when they're coming in. Jay, you have a much better idea in terms of where they are at the Siting Council than I do, or where we sit with the negotiations with the community in terms of the long-term impact, budget impacts and assessment or taxable impact. But that's, that's aside from the revenue that comes in from the Building Department and the permitting or the application fees.
Any questions or comments from members of either board for Rand? Charlie?
Selectmen Ordell, Rand, are you having trouble getting that part-time inspectors to, to help you out?
Well, right, right now, the state is having a very hard time bringing new inspectors into the field. And to give you an idea, Charlie, I hate, I hate to date myself, but in 2000, in the year 2000, I was encouraged, I went back to school and actually obtained my license to become a building official. And it was, it was tough. I was 41, 42 years old and running a business, young family. And we're finding that a lot of the, the younger tradespeople have absolutely no interest in coming into the profession of working in municipal inspections. So I guess the short answer is yes. It will be, it will be a challenge to find somebody. And because of that challenge, it creates a, a salary. I guess you could say, the word goes to the highest bidder. I, I'm taking a look at, on average, of paying a contracted electrical inspector, if I can find one in the $70-an-hour range, okay, but they are completely off the books. It is a duration of project position. Whereas I, I think, I don't know, but I had targeted $30 an hour for a part-time, on-the-books electrical inspector, and that would not exceed 19 hours a week. So it's an on-benefit position.
Charlie? Anything else, Charlie?
To give you folks,
Sorry, Rand.
To give you folks really an indication of, of some of the scope of what we're dealing with. And I'm just going to hold this up so you can see it. These are two solar fields that we have in town right now. There's somewhere around 11,000 panels. This is out on Whopping Road. One of the solar fields you can see partially from Whopping Road. The other one is completely hidden from view. You can also view this from Google Earth. In comparison, just the gravel pit solar alone, I have shaded the existing solar fields in silver. And you can see the scope and range of what a 100 and you can see the scope and range of what a one hundred and twenty-six megawatt solar field looks like. This, this will, I've spoken with M Field, which has, I believe it's somewhere around thirty-four, thirty-six megawatts, and I've spoken with Simsbury, which has twenty-six megawatts. And based on their numbers and based on their inspections, I expect the gravel pit solar project alone to be in the vicinity of a hundred and forty, and that's just a rough estimate, a hundred and forty inspections for that project alone.
Charlie, did you have any other questions? Other, other members of the Boards of Selectmen or Finance? I see Tom and then Alan.
Yeah, Rand, with the addition of the full-time clerk, how would we see a benefit? Would the public get their inspections more quickly because you'd be doing less office work and more inspection work? Just sort of an idea of how that clerk position's going to help you out.
No, Tom, this, this is a position that we've, we've requested continually over the last, really over the last eight to ten years. It's a position that has been needed. Processes change, things change. We had hoped to have a or see an increase in efficiency with the new permitting system, but there's still a fair amount of input. That coupled with the increase that we've seen over this past fiscal year, and we've seen a steady creep of, of business increase. Couple that with the regulation increase, the number of calls increase in the population, new houses. I guess the bottom line is, whenever we get into a situation where we see residential developments, residential developments take a great deal of work, a great deal of organization, record-keeping, information questions, so do I think it would be beneficial for the department, i.e. the taxpayers in town? Absolutely. We, we go many instances without anybody in this office, and when I say anybody in this office, because the part-timer right now comes in, we do our best to make sure the holes are plugged in terms of vacations. But if there's sick time, people are out sick, we're limited to the number of hours a part-timer can come in, and that number cannot exceed a thousand hours a year. Effectively, the number differential on that on that part-time position, as I spoke before, currently that part-time position for this fiscal year pays seventeen thousand one ninety-one, and that's without benefits. With the benefits package factored at approximately thirty percent, it would be around sixty-seven thousand or about fifty thousand dollars more, a little over two hundred dollars more a day. And I, I know it's probably easy for me to sit here and say this, that I believe that our revenue generation is such that we can, we can pay for that without an impact, so to speak, to the general fund in terms of that, but a lot of times people don't want to mix apples being revenue with expenses being budget.
Okay, great, thanks.
Alan?
So as far as this electrical inspector part-time position is concerned, I mean, do you feel like there's that much work for somebody after we get through this spike in, in activity? You know, say it's two years down the road, do you think that there's enough work to support this position?
Well, and that's, Alan, why I'm asking for a part-timer, because a part-time, no-benefit position, if there isn't, they can be phased out and let go without any, any real impact to the budget. You see, they're not, they're not a protected class of employee, okay? Part-time is part-time, and that's how I look at it. But to answer your question, do I think there is enough work? Yes, I do. The push on solar, and I don't have a current list, but I'm more than happy to provide it to the board. I don't have a current list tonight, I'd hope to have it, but circumstances beyond my control prevented that from happening. We have kept a running spreadsheet of solar installations in this community from day one, from my first day coming into office. So we know the size of the system, we know the location of the system, we know the cost and the expense of the system. To, to give you folks an idea, I did three solar installation inspections today. And this morning, as a matter of fact, and these solar applications come in from companies all over the state. So there again, the long, short answer, Alan, is do I think the community, community and the workload will sustain a part-time electrical inspector? Yes, I do. With that part-time position too comes the flexibility to say, guess what? We're only going to be able to use you two half-days this week. So we, we budget for the worst, but we hope for the best, and if we don't have to spend it, we don't spend it.
Thanks.
Other questions for Rand?
Jason, it's Noreen. Rand, on that, that part-time position, do you think you'll be able to hire somebody, or is it going to be a issue with getting somebody who will be a consistent thing when it's a thirty-hour-a-week position?
Well, Noreen, I typically, what I've seen over the years of being here, when you hire into that type of thing, I'm either going to get someone that's right at the start of their career that's looking to secure a full-time position, but hasn't, because they don't necessarily have the experience, they're fresh, they're greenhorn, greenhorns, or I get someone that is at the end of their career, they have retired from a full-time position, they still have their licenses, they still have an interest in the profession, and they don't want to work more than thirty hours a week. So I'm hopeful I can find someone at, at that end of things that has the experience, has the knowledge, understands the systems, and knows the electrical code well enough to provide the level of security for the community that I'm looking for.
And because you may need them sometimes more hours than the nineteen a week, people will be, you know, you'll find people who are willing to do more hours at one point and then less hours at another point, without it becoming a situation where they up and leave, and then we're stuck with having to get professional, develop, professional service people and paying them seventy bucks an hour.
Well, there's never a guarantee when you hire somebody on a part-time basis. There again, when somebody comes in on a part-time basis, there has to be some flexibility on both ends of the spectrum, meaning they come into a part-time position typically thankful for the opportunity, but understanding that there has to be flexibility. We can't, we cannot exceed a thousand hours with these people on an annual basis. That, that, we just can't do it. There's no budget, there's nothing there. I understand the depth of your question, meaning the thirty, hopefully thirty dollars an hour for a part-time individual coming in as opposed to a seventy-dollar-an-hour contracted professional services individual. I do. At this point in time, I'm willing to take whatever I can get because the need is there, it's there now, and we're going to be crushed once we take in these super-solar applications.
Thanks.
There's a person who identifies as Karen on the call, is that Karen Christensen? If it's Karen, I just want to make sure I'm giving her an opportunity to chime in too. Amy, did you have anything to add on, on Rand's budgets?
Yes, it's me, Jason.
Oh, I'm sorry, Amy, hold on one second. Karen, did you have anything for Rand?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I'll check in, or I'll try and remember to check in each time we have one of these, so. Amy, did you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Rand, thank you very much.
I'd like to thank everybody, and everybody, please be safe out there tonight. I think it's slippery. Thank you.
All right, next up is our newest supervisor. Clark Chapin is our Director of Planning and Development. You guys all have met him before, so, you know, actually, the Board of Finance folks may not have met him yet. So Tom Lassner, Karen Christensen, and Noreen Farmer are on our Board of Finance. Clark comes to us with experience at the federal, state, and local level. And most recently, he worked for the USDA Farm Service Agency. He's been with us now for four weeks, and his department budget was submitted, I think, three days after he got here. So I'm sure he has some thoughts on what was put together on his behalf. There's quite a lot different in this budget in comparison to previous years, and this is one of my priority areas this year, which is also a reflection of the feedback that I and I know others received from our constituents over the last couple of years. So Clark, I would invite you to make any opening comments you want, and then we can start diving in and trying to address some of the contents of the budget.
Thank you very much, Jay, and good evening, everybody. Why don't we start with the six boards and commissions that the Planning and Development Department staffs? That should be an easy lift. There's no change over the current year for the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Inland Wetlands, the Agricultural Commission, and the Conservation Commission. The one border commission that did have a request that doesn't match the First Selectman's recommendation was the Economic Development Commission, who in the current budget had three thousand dollars appropriated. The request that went in included three thousand dollars, but since they haven't spent, I don't believe they've spent any of the three thousand this year. I think I can understand why it's no longer there, and it's also my understanding that it may have been repurposed elsewhere in the budget, but I can let Jay speak to that. As far as the Planning Department itself goes, the notable changes, I would say, well, let's start with the dues and fees line, the original. This year's budget had four thousand dollars in there. The department request increased that to seventy-three, thirty-nine. I think that that was based on some misinformation and primarily covering tuition reimbursement, which is, my understanding, is picked up in a different area of the budget, not in the Planning and Development Department. So reducing it back down to four thousand dollars does make sense. The one that the other reduction was in the advertising line. The current year budgeted number is forty-five hundred dollars. We requested forty-five hundred dollars again. The recommendation was to reduce it to fifteen hundred. If you go back five years, you'll see that there was zero in fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. That's my understanding that that money was coming out of a different line, and I think that that doesn't help us in coming up with a good basis on what the real number is. So if we were to look at last year's expenditure for that line, it was a little over eighteen hundred. This year, it's already over fourteen hundred, so I think fifteen hundred isn't going to be quite enough, so I would advocate that we increase that line at least seven hundred and fifty, maybe a thousand dollars. It's hard to project what the applications are going to look like over the rest of this fiscal year and into next year, but certainly, I think, based on what's been spent this year already, that line should be bumped up some. The other one that is certainly noteworthy is the professional services. As you know, we, the town has had an interim planner who is still working here part-time. And what I found in my very quick, short four weeks is there were a lot of things that have not been tended to, a lot of things that have been placed on the back burner, and we could definitely stand to keep a consultant on additional hours in the upcoming year. Most of you know that the Warehouse Point Planning Study was recently completed. That came with recommendations for new regulations. I think right now we have eleven zones in town. I think if we adopted everything that was suggested in the Warehouse Point Planning Study, there'd be an additional nine. I think probably we could work to find some happy median, but to do that, we really do need the benefit of additional help in this department. Certainly, economic development continues to be a priority for the town, and one of the things that we've definitely not taken advantage of is some of the grant opportunities that are out there to help in that regard. So that would be another good use, and I'm very supportive and happy to see that the First Selectman's Office has supported an increase in that line.
Any questions or comments from Clark? I gotta say, I thought he did an excellent job of of bringing that whole department into context. You all know that the Planning Department has been an area that has needed some bolstering over the last couple of years. I really, truly think that we have the right personnel in place now to have that department be a meaningful contributor to the town's future. And I think that this would be an opportunity for us to invest in that staff and to empower that department to really move us forward. And that's why there, there are a number of different budgets that I've repurposed money from in order to support this. My intention there is to make it, make a statement about where the priorities are in terms of future development opportunities while also being mindful of the impact on the budget. And between Clark and Ruth Ann, I am very, very comfortable and confident in the staff that we have there. I think that being able to retain consultation services for some projects outside of their job scope makes it all the more empowered. I think that just really turbocharges that department, so we can not just carry on with the things that are coming through the door now, but actually encourage additional opportunities there. Questions or comments for Clark? Alan?
For the professional services line, I do agree that, at least for the next year or two, that keeping somebody on to help out with catching things up in economic development and whatnot is advantageous. But that line in the past has been reserved for, you know, say, you know, in wetlands, if we need, if we have a large application, a complex application, we need to hire a soil scientist, or, you know, those types of things, that's where that money would come out of. How do we anticipate covering those items if they were to come up over the next year? Would they come out of that, out of that line or somewhere else?
I think that would have to depend on the cost and the point in the calendar where we are. You know, the current arrangement that we have with CHA, now, I think, a company called Tai Chi, there was an assignment of contract there. I think that the functions that they bring to the table are pretty, pretty expansive. They do a lot of different functions for a lot of communities. I don't know if they have some sort of soil science component. My guess is that they don't. But if there's a need there, we would need to find, we'd need to find the money either in that, in that line or someplace else to meet those needs.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments, Marie?
Yeah, I just have a question on the Economic Development Commission.
Yeah, I just have a question on the Economic Development Commission. Have you checked to see if they have any outstanding contracts with that website that they've been trying to do over the last several years? Because there has been charges Pacific Plus in 2019, an aerial photographer, that type of thing. And I only know that because Jim Richards was appointed secretary and prior to that he asked for documentation, which we see. I just want to make sure that before we remove it, they don't have anything that they are obligated to pay. And I know.
So generally speaking, Civic Plus is the town's website administrator. They they don't do just the economic development website. They do the town website in its full capacity. Most expenses, if not all of the expenses around Civic Plus and the website maintenance are in the IT budget. I don't believe that there are any open contracts. There certainly has not been any. Not anything that's come across my desk in the last year and a half.
Okay.
Marie, I think it was all paid. We had a couple different couple thousand dollar contracts and I think they've all been paid.
Okay, I just want to make sure there's no obligation that we're not aware. That's all.
And we do still have the money in this year's budget. If we do have something out there, we should get it done and paid.
I thought that was taken.
No, current year, the budget we're in right now has $3,000 still.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for Clark or for me? Karen?
I'm good.
Thank you. Noreen?
No, I'm good, Jason. Thanks.
No other members of the Board of Selectmen or Board of Finance? Amy, you have anything to add? How about on any of the the boards or commissions that are serviced by the Planning Office? Clark, you want to just do a brief overview on some of the things that are happening there in your time here?
Sure, with the Boards and Commissions specifically? Sure. Well, as everyone knows, Planning and zoning has been very busy. The actual commission work's been busy. We had a somewhat controversial application or two applications that generated an awful lot of interest from community members. Since those applications were withdrawn, it's calmed down a bit, but I think we're up to our sixth application for the year going before P and Z, which is a little ahead of last year's pace. ZBA, not too busy. I don't think they've met in a few months. Wetlands has one or two compliance issues that we're dealing with now. The Ag Commission is getting ready to work on the community garden leases again this year. And the Conservation Commission recently, and they've been trying to get an open space ordinance for open space assessments done for quite some time. And I recently sent them a draft as to what that may look like. And I'm waiting for feedback on that, but we're moving the ball forward on that. The Economic Development Commission had a meeting this week and we did talk a little bit about the website. And I had a preview of that today and it's certainly something that the staff here in Planning and Development Department is interested in seeing to completion and moving forward. I think it'd be a good asset for the town to have that in place. So we will work towards that.
Any questions or comments for Clark? Okay. Thank you very much, Clark.
Thank you very much.
Next is the tax clerk. Patty, the floor is yours.
Good evening. A lot of my stuff is, it doesn't change a lot. There's a little bit of rearranging, taking advertising out of professional services and showcasing the the advertising. And giving it its own line item. We are having in advertising, we do have Broadbrook this year, so I need to do legals for Broadbrook. And there's also under professional services, I have to have a posted rate book and binding for Broadbrook. So they have to be brought out separately, just like Warehouse Point. So there are some added costs because of those those items. Most of my stuff pretty much stays the same. I did request a part time person. We are kind of struggling here in the in the tax office right now and and during COVID, when we were just supervisors handling the office and now I have a, my assistant is out on medical, she'll be out for six weeks and trying to get office coverage is difficult. And I see this as I I kind of feel this is going to be an ongoing thing. I'm tending to do a lot more administrative stuff during July. I would help out with a lot of the posting of payments. But I'm feeling like with Broadbrook and with a lot of the solar stuff, I'm doing a lot more of setting up the bills and figuring out how to do billing for a lot of these tax abatements and stuff like that. So I'm spending a lot of time doing administrative stuff and not so much helping out with the posting. And I'm concerned with having two districts. But there's going to be a lot of untangling of of stuff and problem solving. And I feel that a part time person will most definitely be beneficial for also the tax collector and the assistant have to do continuing education credits up to 50 continuing education credits. They would also cover vacation, sick time, stuff like that. Who knew this year that we would be having, you know, COVID and my assistant would be out for six weeks? So I respectfully ask that that be put back in into the the budget. But that's 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 my budget for this year. Any questions?
Questions or comments for Patty? I'll ask Karen first, followed by Noreen if she has any.
I'm good.
Thanks, Karen. How about you, Noreen?
All set. Thanks.
Anyone else? Amy, do you have anything? Okay. Patty, thank you very much. Town clerk. Adam clerk, no longer the most junior supervisor. You guys all, Amy came on effective the beginning of August and immediately came into baptism by fire with trying to administer her offices' functions around the presidential election. She hit the ground running and has done a great job, but this is her first budget process and Amy Lamb and I, I'm sorry, Amy O'Toole and I sat with Amy Lamb to look at her budget to make sure that the way that Joanne Slater had had it structured still makes sense and and was meeting what Amy was trying to do in her department. So Amy, the floor is yours.
Okay, just bear with me because I'm a little nervous. Not that there's much. Honestly, our budget hasn't really changed too much. Obviously, part time salary increase, longevity increase for my assistant. I went up a little bit in professional services because our quote for the land record auditors went up per document that they audit. So that had to be up just a little bit. The other area which I went up in was the supply line. Because of COVID, honestly, we have been super busy. Obviously, the housing market, people refinancing, buying houses, selling houses. So the books that we are using normally, we could fill a book between six and eight weeks. We've been filling a book pretty much every four to five weeks with the amount of recording we've been doing. So that was just upping the amount for the land record books and the paper as well as the book and paper allotment for the selectmen minutes. And the only other thing that went up a little bit was the dues and fees. I know that Joanne wasn't attending the Hartford County Clerk's Association's quarterly meetings. Me being still newer to the town clerk field. I want to make sure I have every opportunity to network and get together with other clerks to see how everybody else is doing things. There's a lot of valued information when those meetings happen. And a little bit for the conferences went up, but that's contingent on if we ever get back to normal. I just wanted to put that in there for safeguards. So when we, well, hopefully get back to normal. You know, we'll be able to be going to these meetings and to the conferences. And I think that's that's about it. Are there any questions?
Members of either board?
Jason, if it's okay. Yeah, I've had the opportunity to work closely in the town clerk's office with the voting process. This year we had a dramatic change in how things were done. But I just want to commend them publicly for a job well done in there. For the new people that are in there, they really, they really took that task and made it so much easier to follow through. So I want to thank them for that. And that's why I think it's encouraging that she's willing to go ahead and start attending the meetings because there's going to be a lot of changes coming down the pike when it comes to responsibilities of the town clerk versus responsibility of the register. So I think it's important that we leave that in there for her for attempt. So this way we know where our future is going in that aspect.
I agree with your comments. I think I think that as Amy has hit the ground running and has done a very, very good job.
Thank you. Well, it's not just me. I have a great, both my assistants are wonderful. So we make a great team. That's important.
Other questions or comments for Amy Lamb? Amy O'Toole, do you have anything? No? Okay, so is there any public participation? Is there any public participation? Seeing none? We would adjourn the, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop. And we'll reconvene in about 25 minutes with our regular meeting, which will include more budget presentations and other businesses appropriate.
Sarah Muska Selectman, I'll move to adjourn the budget workshop.
Is there a second?
Marie, just a second.
Been made and seconded. Selectman Muska?
Hi.
Welcome to SUSA.
Hi.
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 We are adjourned at 6:35 PM.